Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 9th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney is online, our city planner is present, our city engineer is present, along with all city council members and our city administrator? At this time, I will ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. What do you would like to speak at this time?
Hi, everybody. Jamie Holland.
Hello.
Um, hopefully Sarah will get here soon, but when
Do we have a microphone for? Does it work? No, it's working. We can hear you, but is, do we need it for online?
There's so much.
There's one. Oh, I'm sorry. You have a black top, so from here you could not see it from my, you're good. Sorry. I just want to make sure for
So before Sarah gets here, I just want to say congratulations on the groundbreaking. It was a very nice event. Thanks for inviting me. I'm super thrilled to have this process underway and then before Sarah gets here, and I don't know, like she's coming from Delano, she's running late. So, but I did want to say I was in Little Falls today, this morning with AMC Association Minnesota Counties. And we were looking at, you know, some of the things that are coming our way. One of which is this, the shift that we're hoping today with the special session will go away. All the counties, you know, have the same thing as our county, that it would be very onerous on our taxpayers. I do want to thank everybody that we had a lot of people email, we had a lot of people call. And we, I really appreciate the support of that. So that was great. But um, this is Sarah. Sarah is our Director of Public Health. And she and I were just in San Antonio for an emergency preparedness. And when we were there, Sarah had said that she was very excited that you're getting a fire department. And a lot of people think of public health as being just clinics and nurses and well-being. But it's a bigger scope and Sarah's been our director. We're very lucky to have Sarah because at down at the state, she's won awards. She's very well-known. Wright County is lucky to have her. So I want her to congratulate you guys on this process and kind of go forward as to what she's thinking.
Sure. Um, thank you. I apologize. I went to the city hall. It's my first time. I mean, to Atsigo, probably should not have been my first time. I've been the director. Again, I'm Sarah Grosses and the Public Health Director. I've been the director for almost eight years. Um, I would just, yeah, what Commissioner Holland just shared, we have been working, my predecessors set up first responder and fire department meetings over 30 years ago. And we meet quarterly with them. They're critical partners in all of our preparedness activities. And to have that partner be another partner in the, in the county stand-up is just a fantastic opportunity. Really high-functioning fire department doesn't just bring you fire service. They're the ones who tell us what they see when they go into homes. They are the first to tell us where opportunities for improvement and public safety are. They often know what's wrong with your roads before maybe your engineer does, because they're the ones doing, you know, seeing the accidents, seeing the, the repeats and having them in your community allows them to get that, you know, get that higher level of service where you're going to get them thinking about, well, we're seeing trends in these kinds of calls. We maybe need to think about what we should do differently. Falls, they may be seeing trends in different kinds, like missing smoke detectors and really give you an opportunity to talk about how they could really improve the health and wellbeing of the community. They're great partners for that. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but we'll make sure to get your new department on our list to join us.
Perfect. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay. Thanks a lot and look forward to working with you guys with this process. And if you need anything else, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comments?
Vincent Peterson, 1406467 Circle. I was wondering if we have an honest estimate of how much the property tax increases are going to be on Atsigo residents for the total operating budget and the contracts services. For the fire departments, they're going to probably have to have contracts with even once we have our own fire department. I'm looking for some kind of number as to what the estimated cost is going to be on our property taxes.
Adam.
Mayor Council, I don't have the property tax impact offhand, and that would change depending on what the valuation of a home or a business is throughout the community. The total estimated operating budget for 2027 was presented to the City Council and Public Safety Commission on April 29th, I believe it was. And it's included within that packet, so.
So the 1.6, the 1.6 million dollar payroll plus the contracts.
Mayor Council, for 2027, there would not be any contracts as of current. It would be the city department operating.
So there will be any contract services paid after 2027? Is that correct?
Mayor, as of now, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will close the open forum and move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Right.
I move to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item three, our consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
That's right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our planning section, item 4.1 is the Atsigo Waterfront. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. This item was tabled from your meeting on May 27th. It's consideration of the planned development, development stage plan, preliminary plat of one lot and three outlots, as well as vacation of existing drainage and utility easements. The item was tabled to allow the developer to provide additional information and revise plans, which they submitted on June 2nd. So city staff had opportunity to review them prior to inclusion in the packet for your consideration tonight. The first issue that they addressed was the required parking under the ordinance in place currently, which was approved at the meeting on May 27th. The developments required have 301 parking spaces, including 121 interior parking spaces. We're providing a total of 317 parking stalls, including 121 interiors spaces. You can see on the graphic essentially the parking added on the south side of the multiple-family structure, extending the commercial area further south. The lobby is tucked in so that it added space is somewhat hidden from view of the street on Quantrell. You'll see on the elevations how it's more apparent where that addition happened. But it's basically the same structure, just adjusted as the developer had indicated they would do at the meeting. The other item was the exterior materials, as initially presented, didn't have 65% grade A, which would be the CMU block, brick base or glass materials. To address that requirement, they added brick facing to the second through fourth stories of the structure above the parking garage on the multiple-family dwelling. Still keeping the cyber or fiber cement materials in place as an accent material and to provide differentiation in color and texture. So this now complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. That would be the basis of the plan developed district, referencing the, either the commercial districts or the new M1 zoning district. And on the graphic on the upper left corner, you can see that expanded garage area tucked in between the building and the commercial still facing south. Well, the final issue that city staff worked with the developer on over the last two weeks was the fire access along the north side of the building. The city engineer applied the turning radius of the city's fire apparatus to that northeast corner of the building, showing that it does have the ability to circulate through that access lane. We're still reviewing with the emergency services director whether that fire lane is sufficient width, in their opinion, for if they were going to stage to fight a fire in that location. So the truck can get through there, but you want additional space for staging, equipment, and also separation from the building. But if you look back at the site plan, should I get it this way? There's plenty of space to be able to shift the building further south, so adding five to 10 feet on the north side of the building isn't a significant issue. And when that staff doesn't feel that there's a need to hold up any action by the council, and that can be addressed adequately through condition. So the recommendation again is for approval of the application. The planning commission again did consider the request of the public hearing on April 21st and had motion unanimously to recommend approval. The revised actions for consideration are approval of the PUD development stage plan and preliminary plat now with 18 stipulations and approval of resolution 2025-24 vacating those existing drainage and utility easements with the Nathan addition.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Good evening, everybody. Jesse Hartong, 18837 Ogden Street Northwest, Elk River, Minnesota. Thank you for doing a quick turnaround and review. I believe we've dialed everything and hopefully that had raised concerns last time, and I forward to answering any questions and hopefully seeing approval tonight. Thank you.
All right, council questions for the applicant or for staff? I appreciate that you did go out and turn this around as quickly. We were a little apprehensive, it seemed, at the time to do it, but thank you for doing that and getting it back to us because we gave you a longer timeframe if you needed.
No, I'm, I'm excited to get this to the end hopefully and excited to start the project. So I, I appreciate that we didn't have to go back to your client commission and be able to get this back and work with the city staff to quickly review it, make a couple of tweaks while we still had time to submit it, so.
Other questions or comments?
Corey. Mr. Harding, I have one question, I guess. I know you weren't able to, you weren't able to say what businesses you were working with. Are you able to say what type of businesses you would be looking to?
Small businesses. You know, so other owner operators or colleagues of mine that have, you know, indicated they, they would love to take space there. Unfortunately, you know, again, just for confidentiality reasons and things like that, they're not quite ready to make that announcement. But again, the indication or the goal being to create kind of a Main Street vibe, similar to Stillwater and stuff, so that we would be incentivizing recruiting businesses that are smaller owner operators that provide, you know, unique services that aren't necessarily nationalized chain type stuff there. And then also lean into the, the park area and the stuff you guys have done with your park, the future park development on us to, to really make it more of a recreational kind of entertainment district. So you can think restaurants, rental equipment, businesses where you've got, you know, like insurance companies where they have five, six, seven, eight insurance agents that are working in the office, bringing clients in and out, realtors who are always meeting with clients, we're looking to attract businesses that are going to bring people down there that can support the other shops, support the restaurants, enjoy the, you know, enjoy the park amenities and all that kind of stuff.
Would you ever foresee Tipsy Chicken?
Well, so Tipsy on Main's got a spot right now.
Right.
It's an old building. Definitely, you know, definitely the original goal is to do two restaurants at the location. Currently, we don't have a restaurant slotted. Although that would be something we've been looking at very closely as we get through the initial phase of development. Certainly phases two, I mean, still 100% of a goal of getting a nice boutique hotel down there, something high-end, still want to do the rooftop restaurant. Future phases, hopefully we can get that through, you know, planning approval and everything, but phase one, it'll be, you know, we'll see if we open a restaurant there or not.
And then you might have addressed this in the, in the first couple, I guess, times you've been here, but particularly specifically about the how much the apartments are going to cost. Do you have a ballpark idea? I apologize if you've heard any.
Yeah, and obviously the market's going to dictate that. We do want to come in at the high end of what you would consider market rate, but we also want to provide high-end amenities. So I'm happy to email Dan and share with you guys our latest market study that was done. Rents are going to be competitive with what's in Atsigo now, but I think we'll be offering a little bit higher in amenities. So, you know, I think anywhere from off the top of my head, again, these, these numbers change every sort of couple of months. You got to figure where stuff's at, but your, what your studios are going to be right around that thousand dollars a month. You know, one bedrooms are going to start to be somewhere between 14 and 15. Two bedrooms, you know, some under and some over 2,000. And then as you get into your three bedrooms, you'll be closer to 2,500, I think. And but that'll be an all-inclusive price. And I'm sure if you review the past stuff, but the goal is to have your car, you know, your, your parking spot's going to be there. Like I'm very much not a nickel dimer. It drives me nuts when you go places and it's like nickel dime everything, right? And so that's, the goal is to have that be a full, all-inclusive. One of the unique things we're going to do at this project is actually have a fleet of vehicles that tenants can use to rent on their phone with like an app, so you don't necessarily have to have a second car. I think it'll help the parking tremendously. It'll help people's quality of life. So we're going to have that as in many, we're able to get that kind of space. We're going to have gardens up on the rooftop for the residents. It can't be a public rooftop space due to fire code for this phase, but you know, we'll have gardens and space up there and a lot of great amenities. So we'll be very competitive on price, but it will be at the higher end of the market rate.
Some of the other amenities inside, like I know one of our other apartment complexes, they have, you know, theaters and different stuff. Will you have, you foresee that?
Yep. So on the plans, we've got a really nice community space that tenants can use. We're going to have a game room, which is going to be kind of a higher-end thing where we're going to have golf simulator in there for sure. Shuffleboard, those kind of fun games. Hopefully, you know, we'll work with the Parks Department and see if we can start to work on planning events. You know, outside in parking spots and outside in the green space down the road too, but we'll have the public lobby. Inside the public lobby there, we will have coffee shop and a juice bar, you know, so tenants can get downstairs and get their coffee in the morning and things like that. So we're also looking at having a, which, which will be unique to this area is having a part-time security guard and then eventually developing that into future phases into full-time security too, so.
Okay. Um, with Modern Construction, do you guys have any other facility out there yet? Or was Tipsy Chicken your, kind of your first big one?
Well, Tipsy's the first restaurant, but Modern Construction's been building for well over 20 years. Started primarily single-family residential, built stuff well in the multimillions. I've done multifamily development, including some, you know, four or five million dollar developments in Minneapolis. I've done development work, so single-family lots in St. Michael, lots in Zimmerman, lots in Big Lake. This will be the first mixed-use building, which is why I'm partnering with Bauer Design Build to bring their expertise to the table and, you know, make sure it's getting done efficiently and in line with codes and all that good stuff.
So are they going to be doing the design on the project?
So Momentum Design builds the contractor or the architect firm, and then they're going to work with Bauer Design Build out of Plymouth. So Bauer will be the GC, I'll be the developer, and then Momentum will be our architects. And another thing unique to this project is, you know, I'm going to own it and operate it, so it's not a build it and flip it, which is typically the model with a lot of developers, they get in, build them, fill them up, they sell them two or three years, four years down the road, take their money, move on to the next community. So ideally, this will be a phase one and a phase two and a phase three and continue to own it as a, and continue to build on it.
Any other comments?
Yes. I have a question for Dan. And I'm sorry I didn't get this to you ahead of time, but I, if we look at the setback issue off of Quantrell, if I'm reading this correctly, there, the, the shape of the lot is sort of kind of constraining the fact that they wouldn't be able to meet the setback requirement. I'm looking on page six.
Okay, I was like, what?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So I can understand sort of giving some leeway on the setback requirement. But then isn't the next section on pedestrian access and the requirement that they actually build a sidewalk, doesn't, aren't those two issues sort of in conflict? Mayor, so.
Ranger.
So you can see on the site plan, the dash red line is the property line. So they're building the parking stalls right up to the property line, and then you have the right-of-way. The parking stalls are 20 feet deep, so this is an exceptionally deep boulevard to the roadway surface because it's still rural section. So they're putting the sidewalk in the public right-of-way. And it's in the, the boulevard is of sufficient width that there's no visibility issue or conflict with the sidewalk, even with the reduced setback along the lot line.
Okay.
And again, the constraint physically is the Wild and Scenic Boundary that's pushing all of the development away from the river. So even when we had looked at Atsigo Waterfront east to the north or Nathan's and how these lots would develop, the intent was to push everything as close to Quantrell as possible. And recognizing this extra-wide boulevard gives that opportunity to accommodate the needed pedestrian space, space for drainage, space for utilities and the parking.
So then
they maintain the boulevard adjacent to their property per the city code.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you have any further questions right on that?
I guess just one, I think you've kind of clarified it, but in the in the document that we have, sort of the summary, it does say that there, there's not enough grading materials. And it looked from the design like that's true, like there's only 32% grade A, but then you just showed that.
Yep. So I saw that in the packet. For some reason, the memo that is in the packet wasn't the final version.
Oh, okay.
Not saved it before I sent it, but the numbers on the RC are correct.
Okay. But this doesn't show that what the material would look like, right? This is just a demonstration of where that material would be brick.
Mayor, if you actually zoom in on it, you can tell that the charcoal on the fifth and sixth stories is horizontal lap siding, but these areas are actually brick.
Oh, okay. So this is
It's correct.
representative of what it would look like.
Yep.
Okay.
And then they also have the percentages on the actual plan sheet at the bottom.
Right.
Which was our concern, but he hadn't met it last time. We asked for those upgrades. Anyone else have any other questions? Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. Okay.
Motion to approve a preliminary plat for Atsigo Waterfront and a PUD development stage plan for lot one, block one, subject to the stipulations as stated with the findings of fact and decision as presented.
Second. Motion by Tina, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think most of the issues, well, almost all of the issues that we've discussed over the past couple of years have been addressed. The one that remains for me is building height. I just think it's really two stories above our, our current maximum. I just have an issue with that, so it's going to be a no for me.
Any other comments? Corey?
Madam Mayor, I, what, much as I, I like the idea, I agree with Ryan. The building height.
Yes.
Just a quick comment. So this was being processed as a PUD prior to adoption of the M1 district, which was approved at your last meeting. The M1 district would allow height up to 75 feet on this property.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion, motion passes three to two.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 4.2, the Sunshine Edition. Dan?
Thank you. Mr. Fisher has just joined us. See, so good timing, as always. This is an application for Atsigo Waterfront Commons for request of a PUD development stage plan, a final plat of one lot and vacation of existing drainage and utility easements. This site is located at northeast corner of Trunk Highway 101 and 90th Street as part of the Waterfront Commons development, where phase one was the Little Gym and Kennedy Vision Buildings. This was one of the three lots within that development, which is guided by the Conference of Plans for Commercial Land Uses. It's only a PUD district with uses allowed based on the B1 retail district, which allows for dentist offices as a permitted use. There is still a third phase to the east of the site that would be forthcoming at some point in the future. The first step is they need to finalize what is currently an outlot into a lot and block with the PUD district. There are no requirements in terms of minimum lot area width. Basically, it's defined based on the setbacks established by the PUD district and off-street parking requirements, which we'll address as part of the site plan. There are utilities to the property and the developer will pay their availability charges with approval of the final plat. Stormwater for this development is handled as part of the regional pond into the east of the Cowboy Jack's Building that's within Carrot's Landing. The plat included drainage and utility easements overlying existing utilities as well as some planned utility locations. Those will be vacated and reestablished with the new final plat. And then finally, the city attorney drafted a development contract for the project to proceed under completion of the public and private improvements. The setbacks for the PUD district required basically no setback except for between structures. The intent initially was that this property would be developed with buildings forward to 90th Street, basically mirroring the one structure on the south side of the roadway. The intent was to kind of put buildings forward, parking behind. So this building layout with the structure directly adjacent to 90th Street and parking to the north across from the Kennedy Vision and Little Gym building is appropriate and consistent with that direction established with the initial approval of the Waterfront East District. Off-street parking is shared between all three parcels within this plat and this development. There's 35 stalls required between the existing uses. They've got 94 parking spaces shown just with these two phases, so that does give some additional flexibility for phase three as well in the future. Sidewalks are connected to the adjacent public sidewalks on 90th Street and to Quantrell Avenue to the north to provide pedestrian access. Their initial landscaping plan was fairly minimal, included turf grass and one tree, so we suggested they add some additional plantings, submit that to review for city staff approval prior to a building permit. Signs, they'll have one freestanding sign at the corner of the property modifying what was initially approved with the Kennedy Vision property where they'd have just the one highway visible sign. With the additional sign area that they had available from that, they're basically taking it off that sign, putting it more at a ground level at the intersection, visible to traffic exiting at County Road 39 or coming eastbound across under the freeway. Waste storage is provided with a trash enclosure on the west portion of the site, basically south of where the Kennedy Vision is. And they've also provided, or they need to provide an exterior lighting plan with their building permit application, which is typical. The building's approximately 3,500 square feet. The site plan did show a potential 3,000 square foot addition to the south, which isn't necessarily part of the approvals, but we had liked to be able to see that to know that we're reviewing it appropriately in terms of off-street parking as well as utility locations. The building's a single-story structure and at 67% a grade A material, so it complies with all requirements of the zoning ordinance and PUD district. City staff is recommending approval of the application. The planning commission likewise voted unanimously to approve the request after their public hearing on May 19th. So we have three acts. Public hearing on May nineteenth, uh, so we have three actions for council consideration tonight. On the findings and a fact and decision approving the project includes thirteen.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members and staff, Steve Fisher. Um, one oh seven six six Dunkirk Lane, Maple Grove, Minnesota. I don't have anything further to add. Um, if you have any questions for me, I guess I'm here to answer them. Excited to. Continue the development there and get something going, but kind of vacant land there for a little bit too long in my opinion, so it's excited to see. Phase two go. We do have some ideas for potential phase three that we're working on, and we hope to bring real soon here, so. But if you have any questions on this sunshine, I'm welcome to answer them.
Perfect, stay there in case we have anything. All right, council questions.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, um. I think this is great. Uh, when do you think it would be up and running? Um, assuming it would get approved?
Uh, we're, we're um hoping to break ground in July, which means we'll complete it in the late fall. So she wants to be open by the first of the year for sure.
Okay, is this, is this sunshine? Is it pediatrics or?
Yes, sunshine pediatric, so she does specialize just in pediatric dentistry. I don't correct me wrong, but I think it only goes up to age eighteen, I think, and she does not work on adult, um, adults for dentistry. Just. Um, I guess I'm not adults.
Yeah, so yeah, my, my wife has worked in uh. Eats for a long time with dentistry. I know like a lot of people.
Sure.
Uh, surrounding cities have to go into Maple Grove or other.
Or Coon Rapids.
Yeah, so to have one around here is would be a great addition.
Yeah, she's really excited. She's working in um St. Cloud area right now.
Sure.
Real excited to, to get, get it up and running, so.
Right, any other comments, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ryan?
Um, this is probably a question for Dan. I'm trying to visualize what the sign is. Is the visual that we have. Does that represent what the sign would be?
Which page, Brian?
On the building or?
On the building?
Yeah.
Or monument?
Oh.
It's the eight twelve.
Well, this one too, on the wood.
There's one on the woods.
Yeah.
Picture too.
Yeah, more interested in the freestanding one.
Oh, the honeymoon.
On the building though.
So Dan, did you have in the, the approval on the?
Oh, I thought you were pointing to.
The pylon sign?
No.
You talked about that, right?
Gotcha.
And and I guess we don't, it'll probably mirror what we have for the um Kennedy Vision and Little Gym. But only be a smaller version of it, because we, we have, we have room to put another hundred and twenty-five square feet underneath. Candy Vision and Little Gym, which would give us the two fifty.
Right.
And then we have seventy left, so it'll be a, a single pole with seventy square feet. With sunshine pediatric on it, which we should have to come in for a separate application with signage.
So would that be a taller sign or would that be like a monument sign on grade?
That, that's going to be just the taller sign on the freeway, just like we have. So we were approved for three hundred and twenty square feet. Um, so we would stick with what we were approved for on the P U D.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So the proposed sign on the site plan on the screen, it said great at this location, it's twenty feet in height.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what that.
So that, so that would not be accurate.
I see.
There is the ability to locate a fifteen. Foot tall, sixty-four squat barefoot monument sign for the entire development. That was part of the original approvals.
Okay.
Okay, and I think her plan was just to keep a small ground monument maybe at the entrance area. Does she have that on the site plan?
That's, that's what we're talking.
Yeah.
Allowed by the P U D district for the three lots.
Okay, okay.
So the sign that you were talking about, Dan, is more on the south?
Yep, this is the one that would be the change from what was originally envisioned with. And the vision was improved.
So rather than using sort of the square footage that's on the existing site, we're kind of.
Taking it down off of that and putting it lower.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, um, so just so unclear, the, the sort of the. Outline of the next phase that's there. I think this was brought up at the planning commission. It does sort of collide with the. Drainage and utility easement, so it would have to change from what it is, right?
Correct.
Okay. By how much?
So you can see the easement line is this dash line here.
Okay.
So this is, this corner of the building is over that easement and it's actually over the water pipe, so. They'd obviously just have to take this space and change how they configure it into this location.
Okay.
Et cetera.
So were you talking about the future addition lines?
Yeah.
So that was changed on the site plan, right, Ron? And present on the engineering? Is it shown?
The sight line for.
The future addition, I think we did change that.
We haven't reviewed that yet.
Oh, got you.
That's why it's still listed as a condition of approvals.
Got you, okay, makes sense.
And the city's not acting on that expansion at this point.
Right, there is no.
It was just, we flagged it in our report to say, hey, by the way, don't go drawing architectural plans for this because it's over in East.
Right. I'm just, I was just kind of curious if that means that this one would have to change or not, but it sounds like it doesn't have to.
And he doesn't have any immediate plans right now. Did I've talked to her about that to put an addition on? If she was going to do one, she said, well, that's probably like a ten, ten-year plan at this point.
Yeah, I was.
She just wanted to see if she had some extra room and what that may look like.
So it'd be her doing the expansion. It wouldn't be another retail.
Well, she owns, she's owning it, um.
Okay.
You know, Emma Zimmerman's gonna own the, the practice and the building.
Okay.
Both.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Corey?
Madam Mayor, um, this one, I guess, uh, you know what attracted her to this area or was she kind of looking in? Atsigo or?
Well, we, we had the land listed for sale, so that's what attracted her to.
You found her.
She called you.
You found her.
Yeah, she called off our land listing.
I agree.
Good deal. Think with that, uh. I'll make a motion. To adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five vacating existing drainage and utility easements. Approve a final plat and P U D development stage plan for sunshine addition. Subject to the conditions stated on the findings and fact and decision as presented. And adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six approving a development contract.
Second. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? Moving on to staff reports and updates, Adam.
Mayor, council, nothing for me this evening.
Padra. Thank you, no updates. Dave?
Mayor, I will be um presenting commission agreement tonight, and beyond that, I have no further.
What did he say? Can you say it again?
In case anyone missed that, the city attorney is appearing at the planning commission meeting next Monday by special invitation to.
Oh, thank you for interpreting that.
He was busy working on his presentation.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. All right, Dan.
Uh, well, Dave's coming, so I got nothing else.
All right. Ron?
Uh, we held a pre-con for the Odine Avenue water main project and they're going to be starting here in July. Um, so that the, the trail along Odine Avenue from. Um, where the fire station is going in at seventy-fifth down to Seventy Street. That'll be closed for two or three weeks while they work in that area to put the water main in. And then towards the end of August, uh, a little portion of Seventy-seventh Street near Odine will be closed to make the connection for water main. But that will hopefully be reopened before school starts and the. We won't be putting up any detours because it's just a, a block and you can get out in both directions, so. It's less confusing for people sometimes if you don't put the detour signs in and just let the locals, people figure out how to get back to their home. Um, there's multiple routes to get to everybody's house and no one will be uh driveways affected by that connection.
Okay.
And we'll be connecting all the uh property owners that are adjacent to the work.
Okay, great, thank you. Wright County?
We're not on a first-name basis anymore?
Well, I was trying to be professional for you.
Okay.
Sergeant Almonds to the front, please. Sergeant Almonds to the front.
Uh, I have three things that I'm sure which order I have it here, so I'll go off of. Um, a couple of times I've brought up that we're going with a new computer system for uh computer aided dispatch and our records management system. Um, that system is under development and that company is currently working with our agency to develop it, so I got to sit in on a. Feedback session with the company and I guess I'm actually really optimistic now after having some one-on-one time with them. They actually seem to care about what the premise behind it. Uh, I think a lot of computer systems are kind of looking for, you know, what type of paycheck can we get at the end of this? Their philosophy so far has been like, yeah, we want to improve public safety by how we're doing this and your efficiency. Uh, they had the, I guess, uh unfortunate pull of having to hear me in a meeting and start talking about all the things that I. Want to change and that ended up being a couple hour meeting and a lot of them thinking on their behalf.
They were like, oh, we invited the wrong guy.
Yeah. Um, but I mean, they, every time I said something, they would nod their head and they would type it in their notes and like, oh, I've never thought of it that way, so that's. Uh, good, I guess, that they're, they're taking it seriously and I think it, um, I'm pretty optimistic after being able to, uh. Actually have that face-to-face.
And I believe you said that some of the previous people that started this company were in law enforcement. There was some tie, like way back.
The, I, I think essentially the CEO of the company, I think, passionate about just public safety in general and. Wants to create something that nobody else has done, so he's, he's been, they're pouring a lot of money into it and all that, so. So, good. Um, I'm going to be super vague with this, but I guess the, the essentially the premise is we get a lot of suspicious person calls and. Anywhere really, uh. I think a lot of people sometimes get hesitant to call because they don't want to bug us, uh, maybe they think it's nothing, maybe they see something that's just slightly different in their neighborhood and they go, that's weird. I'm going to call nine one one. Uh, I guess I'm going to use an example without getting into details with it, but uh. It helps encourage the concept of if you see something in your neighborhood to just give us a call and we can come investigate it, right, wrong or otherwise down the line. If it's something completely mundane and totally good, great, we can all walk away from it, laugh, not a big deal. However, there are times in a case of uh what's happening and at some point I'll be happy to release the information. I am super glad that they called over something that would, to maybe it would seem at the time of like, ah, I don't even know if I should call. Turned into something pretty big and it's going to be an ongoing big thing here, so I guess just my encouragement when I, just reiterating to the council, I guess, to. What I ti- typically say to the, the people that do call is please call, that, that line's there for a reason. Whether it's nine one one or the non-emergency number, it goes to the same person, it's just a different ringtone, so. You don't have to go scramble trying to find that number. If it's something goofy, just call nine one one and come check it out and sometimes it is a gigantic thing. We'll never criticize somebody. Why did you call? This is, we'd never do that. We'll come check it out every single time. We don't say, no, we don't respond to that. We respond to anything you call nine one one. So, uh, and the final thing, I guess, is as far as. It'll just be a call thing. You guys get a report out, uh, Public Safety Commission gets a report out of, uh, you know, every month, different calls that happen in the city. Friendly City Days is in Albertville. You're going to see an increase on things that happen on the border there because of other thing that. Expands and kind of falls into St. Michael and Albertville and into a little bit to Atsigo as everybody leaves those events. There is always a little bit of crossover from that event into Atsigo, so. That is just inevitable.
They're just trying to walk home.
I want people to walk home, believe me.
You could give them a ride.
Be a pack.
Well, I hope it's a successful event for Friendly City Days. Hopefully they have good weather and. And everybody's safe, yeah.
I think we have eighteen or nineteen shifts that are going to be extra for the, from the sheriff's office to be participating in the Friendly City Days for squads and.
Wow.
Personnel in some capacity, so.
Well, it's a lot of days that they have that.
It is, uh, it ended up being kind of a long week for some of the guys that sign up for it for like the entire weekend. It's like a whole five-day deal, so.
It has grown over the years for them. Understatement, right?
Oh, yeah, we have to, to that point, and this will be my public announcement on that, we have two officers dedicated to just minor consumption enforcement.
Oh.
So we're.
For that day.
Nostalgic.
That event. Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Well, you have put.
Put them on notice.
People where they need to be.
That is all.
But that's a good, that's a good public service announcer, right?
Yes.
Yeah. They have been warned. All right, is anyone have anything for Sergeant Almonds this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending this evening.